She helped write them.
So she helped violate them.
I'm a little disadvantaged, having missed that last meeting, but is there someone from Fieldstone here?
Yeah, I have the prints and everything.
Yeah. Would you mind just pointing out the revision that was made?
Yes.
I'm gonna let other board members sort of indicate that it was consistent with what we discussed, but he could orient us to do it, that would be great. And if folks haven't signed in, there is a sign sheet on the corner of the table. Appreciate how you're taking a moment to do that.
There's the unit suite. This one, one here, and then one there. I have a highlighted version here. If anybody would like to see this. The highlighted areas or what was added?
Correct, yeah.
And he drew them quite a ways down as far as he could without getting into buffers to get the water far away from everybody's area.
Not elevation line, but by elevation.
Yeah. Let me see, he put them as close to the buffers as possible. He extended this one quite a ways down to make sure nothing went that way.
Are we able to take pictures of that?
Yes. Yeah, the revisions are going to be, would be signed and filed with the registry of deeds, you know, showing those changes. Yeah. Are there questions from the board about the plans? Is it, are the changes consistent with your expectations?
Yeah, those were the locations we were doing from the last meeting, and that were specified in the motion.
I would think if he was, he would be. Kyle thinks if he wasn't feeling well.
Yeah, Kyle's, sorry, yeah, Kyle's sent a note that he's getting, he's lost his voice, he's getting over illness, so he's not from the meeting.
So I can sign for the secretary.
So these are, you have a MyLars copy, I guess that needs to be signed?
Uh, yes, we, we need a MyLar to file with the registry of deeds.
So we need to pay for the fees.
Yeah, we do need to collect payment for filing fees.
Chad said that we can file, he can file it tomorrow because it's right next to his office.
Yeah, we, our, our procedure is that the board files the documents.
Okay. He just, yeah, he just offered.
That's appreciated, but we'll, we'll need to have a check written for the filing and the L chip.
Okay. And you know how much that is?
Fifty-one dollars, it's twenty-six for the filing and the twenty-five for the.
It's thirty-one dollars?
Fifty-one.
Um, I'd have to look it up honestly, that sounds right.
It's fifty-one dollars.
And they need, it's in separate checks, I think, because of the.
No, I take mine.
The L chip, oh, they do take one, okay. So, yeah, town of Troy.
I'd have, I'm gonna have to run and grab that.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I mean, if you don't mind, then, then, then we can, we could file it, you know, tomorrow or.
Yeah. So I can, I didn't know, I guess there's some of these need to be signed, one of these needs to be signed or something, and then the MyLar.
Right. Um, right, and I did, those, all the copies, those, the paper copies stay with us, the MyLar will go to the registry of deeds.
Do we keep the signed MyLars as well?
Uh, no. Is there, so there's multiple pages in the plans that, correct, um, this is just page one, I assume, or?
This is the, this is the actual, like, plots.
Division.
Yeah, this is the division.
Okay.
So, cause these have, like, like the drainage or.
Yeah.
And stuff like that, this, the registry deed actually is only the. Yeah, the boundary lines and stuff.
After you've taken it out because we've had all this with those, that's why.
Yeah, uh, seems, seems in order. I don't, not hearing any other questions from the board, so. Yeah, if you don't mind dropping off the check, we can, we'll get those filed.
Are we supposed to take one copy with us? We're supposed to have one signed copy, I believe?
Uh, that, that's, that's, I think that's fine, I need to check our regs for how many copies we ask for, honestly. I think it's five, but. Worst case, we might ask you to print another one.
Alright.
You, you wanna take, is it okay if we just drop one off tomorrow?
I can, do you want me to just leave all this right here?
Yeah, then, then I can look up the exact number and drop one off.
Alright.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, I think this was the one, one of these was the one we want, a paper copy, a signed paper copy. But we can swing down and grab it, he told me to leave these for the signature, cause I guess you gotta use.
Yes, right, or, that, those will work. We'll, we'll, we'll plan to just bring up the.
We'll be back in the morning.
Or you're here anyway?
I'll bring back in the morning two checks and make sure everything's all set.
Okay, look for, are you here?
I, I won't be here, but the selectman's office, you can drop the checks off there, and I can make notes for them.
Okay, and then we'll pick up the signed copy later.
Uh, yeah, we could leave it in the selectman's office with a note.
Yeah, that's totally fine.
Alright, so, that's the game plan.
Alright.
Did you have any other questions of us?
Nope.
Okay.
Andrew, do we need a motion on that, or we can just condition read? It was conditionally approved.
Yeah, I don't think, I'm not aware of a need to provide another approval?
Just to accept it as, as, yeah.
So you guys are ignoring the ordinance, the water resource ordinance, number eight, that says this is supposed to go before the conservation committee, I just wanna make sure that you're all saying you're ignoring that. And I'd also like a copy of Carol's, uh, statement about us not being able to comment anything.
The public hearing was closed, that's why.
It was, we were not told that it was closed when we left here.
Kyle closed it last.
He didn't.
Last meeting.
He didn't.
He did.
Why would he then tell us to come back?
Because it was with conditions, if, they brought back their, um, the plans with, with the adjustments.
I'm just saying.
It was conditionally approved.
You have ordinances in place for a reason, you really should be following them.
He met all the criteria for the ordinance.
He didn't, because if you read the, that is in the conservation area on that map, in the, in the water resource section, and under number eight, it's supposed to have the conservation committee going up and reviewing everything.
And the chair of the conservation committee said.
No, he wanted to do it, and you guys told him no.
He said he didn't need to.
No, that's not what he said.
He wanted to, and you guys talked him out of it.
So, to be honest, I haven't read through the minutes, but was this, was this plan unanimously approved? Was this a split vote?
No, it was unanimously approved.
Okay.
Conditionally approved.
Yeah.
The way I interpret the.
Conservation committee went up there and they said no, they denied the permit.
The dimensional requirements in section five was to follow a twenty-five foot buffer, a hundred foot buffer is for septic systems and other.
Keep reading.
Yeah, I did it, a twenty-five foot buffer shall be maintained around all wetlands and streams within, which any alteration of terrain shall follow except to the erosion of sediment control techniques. The hundred foot buffer is for septic systems. Hundred and twenty-five for any storage tanks. Twenty-five for pesticides.
This proposal is just for the subdivision of the land, there's not that construction or development proposed?
Well, it is, no building permission issue, it's just, this one is just for subdivision.
Right, it's, ideally it's to draw lines on a map.
And you tell it to use.
For me.
They're up there already cutting everything, digging, beyond what they said they were going to already. For people that kept telling us they weren't in a hurry, they were up there within a day to two days, and then they were having illegal burns, leaving burning stuff for hours.
Unattended.
I don't think that's really any of our jurisdiction regardless, but.
I just don't know how you can say that's not in the conservation section.
I can pull up, not, I don't wanna go back and forth, but I can pull out certain sections and make them apply, but if I read it as a whole, they'd match.
And just to clarify, on two thousand and six, they had applied for a conditional use permit to build a road across the wetlands, and that was the, that's what the subdivision was.
Can we see that? Cause nobody is.
Yeah, it's in, it's in the material you sent, you gave us last week.
Well, it wasn't me, that was actually your office, or the selectman's office.
Oh, I see, I thought that, okay.
I brought it to their attention, but I'd like to see where you're showing me on his, what that person proposed on his proposal, that that's what he was gonna do, because.
The denial states it, there's no drawing.
Yeah, the denial states it, but I can share you my copy of that, if you want. Do you have a copy of it, or?
Yes, I do.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, that was my read of it, I wasn't here in two thousand and six, but that was my.
Well, I was, and it was, I didn't.
But my, my read of that, I mean, my understanding of the read, if you read the water resource protection district, is roads are allowed by right through wetlands, you have to apply for a conditional use permit, there are four criteria you have to meet. In two thousand and six, they applied for that conditional use permit, they didn't meet the four criteria, conditional use permit was denied, therefore the subdivision was denied.
I thought too, because it was in the conservation area of that map right.
I didn't, I didn't catch that, I mean, I think it's.
That's why they had the conservation committee come up. That's who walked the land and said no.
It wasn't my read of it, I believe you've noticed.
Yeah, unfortunately, the notice didn't mention it enough. It literally stated for the construction of roads and other accessways not associated with agriculture pipelines, power lines, and other transmission lines. And then cited the part of the resource water protection district ordinance that denies that conditional use permit.
Do we have a copy of the first person's request?
So, I just wanna point out, line number seventy-four in our minutes, if Chairman Smith closed the public hearing at nine fifty-four, so we shouldn't be taking comments, so.
Yeah.
Well, he closed it that night, but then we were told to come back.
It's closed that night, so there's not supposed to be any public comment on this, this is for the board to, we have a busy night tonight, and not to be rude, not to be mean, not to be, we have rules and agendas in place for a reason, so.
Yeah, they never followed, but that's okay. That's why we have ordinances too.
I think the, the main matters whether or not the board has to have another vote, and I honestly don't know if another vote is required, and it's like, if the conditions are that, we can just assign the plans and that decision.
I guess I'm, so if this is approved, is he allowed to just go up there and just cut the timber without a timber plan?
The planning board is only approving the new boundaries for the land and, and how the lots are laid out. The planning board is, is not approving any cutting of trees, construction of buildings, you know, I saw water and sewer lines, I think on a plan, none of that is our, part of our authority.
So who does that?
That, well, building, building homes is through, down through a building permit, and.
It would be the selectman's office.
Okay, and then will we be notified as a butters?
Not typically if he meets the criterion for a building permit, which is, has to do with distance, size of the building, business from the lot lines, uh, he can commit a permanent, if he's got, if he's, if he had been logging up there, and I, I saw it on Facebook maybe, or whatever, but I did not go up and look, uh, so I don't know what's going on, that sounds like you guys have a better handle what's going on there. And why he would be up there logging, I don't know.
I'm gonna write up, but you have like, I mean, you can see from South Main to South Street now, it's totally clear. And they want to know what hours they're allowed to work. Because they're interrupting our lives with the amount of noise they're making. It would be nice if it would stop at a decent hour and not keep going after seven.
Okay, um, I think I do feel, just to dot our i's and cross our t's, we should double check on if another vote is needed, I know, but I don't think so, so.
Carol on?
No, she's unfortunately couldn't join, let me double check.
So you want just, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve it?
To, okay.
As amended?
As amended.
Just to cover.
As amended.
Sure, or as amended.
Alright, um, call in favor?
Aye.
Any host? I don't, I don't abstain, actually. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll, we'll, the plan will be to have this, uh, signed copy in the selectman's office, you to pick up.
Alright.
Yeah, and we'll email Chad or you with the filing, you know, book and page info.
Thank you.
Yeah, good night. Um, great, uh, let's, let's move on, uh, agenda to the public hearing.
Before we go into the public hearing, I have a suggestion. So, this is an unusual circumstance where we have a, we have a subdivision plan, that's a conventional subdivision plan, that we've been discussing and commenting.
Yeah.
And in order to get there, he's gonna, we have to approve the waiver, so that he doesn't have to do the conservation subdivision and can get to the subdivision, to the conventional subdivision.
I'm really behind, we have to grant a waiver, so he doesn't follow the conservation subdivision?
It's ten acre, it's ten acres, conservation subdivision is required unless he can demonstrate that a conventional subdivision meets the spirit of intent.
Okay.
Of a conservation subdivision. So, he has a plan, but I think, um, it's good to focus on that plan, but from the perspective of uh, are making a decision on the waiver first. So I recommend that we do the public hearing in two phases, the first phase is to comment on the plan with respect to whether it meets the criteria for a waiver, and then we deliberate on the waiver, and if we pass the waiver, then we go on to a more detailed hearing about the actual plan.
Okay.
And if we don't, if we deny the waiver, then either we go to a preliminary hearing where we discuss, you know, the next steps.
Okay, okay, yeah, regretting that I didn't, not up to speed on this. That seems like we, we wanna be very careful about how we worded our public notice for one, uh, but number two, I mean, that's the reason for preliminary, um, cons, like conceptual consultations, and I.
Well, we, we did.
We don't have a.
We, we did have that, and, and we indicated that.
Okay.
And then last time, they came back with the second conventional plan, you know, they modified the first conventional plan, came back with a second conventional plan.
Okay.
And tonight, they're coming back with a third conventional plan.
Okay, based on the board's feedback.
Yeah, went eight lot, eight lot, now we're at six lots. But rather than just talk about pros and cons of the conventional plan, because it may never, we may never go there, I'd rather focus the public hearing and our deliberation on the waiver, and see if we can make a decision on that tonight, and then, then figure out where to go depending on whether that waiver passes or fails.
Okay. Um, I, where's the notice for this public here?
I, I have it, yeah.
I didn't see it in.
So, I don't wanna usurp the meeting, but I, I'm gonna make a comment on this issue of the notice.
Yeah.
At the last meeting, I brought up the issue of all the butters weren't notified.
Okay, for this?
For this project.
Subdivision.
I don't know, and I, and I, I personally, and I'm gonna butter in this situation, I personally did not receive a, a renotice of this meeting. So, Ebby hadn't said to me this morning, when I was in the selectman's office, and you're coming tonight to the planning board, and I said, why?
And.
I would not have realized there was a hearing again on this project, I would have thought I would have received another notice, and my concern, whether that particular butter cares or not, I wouldn't care to speculate, but I can't imagine that he received notice and we, it's come back, so I, I wanna just officially put it out there, I don't think this meeting was properly noticed.
Have there been two notice, notices for this proposal?
It wasn't in the loop on the noticing.
Cause they skipped one butter, you know, in, in all circumstances.
No, I'll say, we, we updated our butters list the day after that meeting, and, and I know that they were noticed along with it. Along with the town of Fitzwilliam, that's the message.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I was told by Carol to send out a notice to.
Oh, okay.
The, a butter that was missed in the town of Fitzwilliam.
Oh, okay.
Then, what about everybody else that you see?
I was told by Carol to send a notice to the missing butter and to the town of Fitzwilliam.
But not to renotice everybody else?
As far as, I know that's how the word goes.
Okay.
You did, but, that's fine, I mean, I'm not sure it's fine, but that's what you did, that you told me to do. No, nothing on your part.
Um, yeah, Elizabeth, if you have an ability to check, um, the instructions for the notice, that would be maybe handy, um, to decide if we proceed, um, just, uh, so that the subdivision application, there's a butters list in there that was missing a couple of individuals or addresses versus the updated list? This is the updated list, okay. Um, okay. But I, I think where, what Carol's getting at is presumably if they, everyone was noticed for the first meeting, they would have.
This counts, that counted for this meeting.
And that it was continued.
Yeah. Um, but, does anyone have, uh, uh, recollection? I guess the, so the, the subject property would have been the same, the, the notice in front of me says for an eight lot subdivision, although really there's a couple of versions, I guess.
We, we only received the six lot subdivision today.
Okay, alright. Right, so the original, um, proposal was for eight lots, and it's just been amended a little through the dialogue.
That's why you have preliminary hearings, right?
So we're talking about regional impact, and then.
Yeah, Carol's only going, I was just, the south patients continue from submission.
It just says. Just send a notice if it's willing.
And then the last one, there's no, I'm about to say the show.
To the missing butter, yeah.
Public hearing until, the butter could be notified.
Okay, um, Elizabeth showed me a note where she was instructed to send the notice to Fitzwilliam, missing a butter.
And I believe it was continued, right, they were just saying.
I actually felt I'm looking at your minutes, and I'm not.
Could you guys catch me up? What's, did you have another, did you have a question, or?
They're just saying at the last meeting, it was continued to this meeting, and if it wasn't continued, the butters wouldn't have known.
Well, it was actually postponed because we didn't open the hearing because the butters list wasn't, the, the application wasn't complete, so the hearing didn't open.
So it would be a re-hearing, if anything, not a continued, if you didn't even open it.
Okay, so we, just so I got this straight, we noticed a public hearing without a complete butters list.
Right.
Um, that meeting, um.
We were going through the checklist and the, and the butters list was not complete, no hearing.
Okay, alright.
Although Josh requested a preliminary, another preliminary hearing, so that we went through. So there was a preliminary hearing there.
Okay, at the, at the date and time of the original notice with the incomplete butters list.
Which is how you went from an eight lot to a six lot subdivision.
Okay, um, but, is, uh. Yeah, 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 I'm just trying to think what the defect is with the butters list. If all the, but, certain number of butters were noticed last time, they, they didn't, they didn't show up.
Actually.
Or they did, okay, so folks showed up, and at that.
Maybe not everyone.
At that meeting, we.
We took, we took comments.
You took comments, okay, even though there's no public hearing?
Because it was the preliminary, Josh reviewed the plan, he took a couple hours of comments.
Okay, wow.
So there's a preliminary hearing.
Yeah, and the daddy can tell.
You had, if, if, if the, so if this is a hearing, if the, if the right number of our butters was X.
Yeah.
X minus one were notified.
Yeah.
And then because of the nature of the subdivision. No, the second issue was notifying the town of Fitzwilliam because, what's the rule on that?
Regional impact.
Yeah, regional impact, because.
Okay, that.
So, based on that, because the town line literally is every yard there, but this one is half in one and half in the other.
Okay, then, suppose that, that makes sense.
That covers that base.
Uh, I wouldn't call it a regional impact, but I would consider the town to be in a butter. Um, was there a vote on the development of regional impacts? Cause that's a whole nother ball of wax, okay.
But we just did it.
Yeah, okay. Um, I'm not seeing the issue, I guess, or would, did the, did the folks attending at the last meeting understand that tonight would be?
No, I, I think that is the issue.
Okay, but I, I didn't.
I didn't either.
So.
We were all waiting for a new notice.
So, yeah, and unless it was postponed to a date and time certain, they would have no way, I was expecting more people tonight, to be honest.
We, we should do another preliminary hearing. The one thing that I didn't think we could have done in the last meeting was have the preliminary hearing talking more about the waiver. That hasn't, we haven't had a, I haven't had that discussion for a while, so maybe we could use this time to talk about the waiver. Not that we deliberate and make a decision, but just to not, we've got everybody here.
Yeah.
Well, it may, I don't know that you have the people that live on South Main Street, I, I know you don't have a bunch of people.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't mean, I didn't mean we have everybody that's, we're gonna have to have a real hearing and do it again, but I just wanted to provide the feedback to Josh, so he doesn't go away for two weeks or three weeks and not know.
I think everybody's gonna miss a lot of feedback.
But it's preliminary, it's not a.
So, yeah, so it wasn't, it was just postponed, definitely not to tonight at the last hearing.
There's no record, yeah, unfortunately, in the reading.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I don't think we said at that point, when we were gonna.
So. That's why I was surprised by hearing.
Well, I think you need.
You want to, you want to just read it or not? Yeah, we're not planning, yeah, but we're not planning on voting on it tonight if we go like in here.
Want them to be under.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand.
All right, this is the second time.
This is the waiver, the issue on the waiver.
Well, I might as well read it. Kyle's saying. Wait, so, okay, Kyle says, should they vote on the waiver input from, without input from the Conservation Committee? I thought they needed input from Conservation Committee, unless I'm hearing YouTube wrong. Hard to hear, my head is ringing, oh man, sorry. For the Paxton subdivisions, South Street one that falls under Conservation.
Not go into making any decision on the votes, they're just, they're waiting for the hearing to be open first.
Okay. I mean, and there's some things where, like I remember the site plan application regulations say if the planning board, you know, as soon as we see an application that might have wetland impacts, we're supposed to notify the Conservation Commission. I don't know if that is the same for conservation subdivisions, if we're required to.
I don't see, I, I don't think.
I don't see any notice, a, any information growing.
Either way.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think you're actually ever required to go to the Conservation Commission, I, I believe they're just advisory board in New Hampshire. So a lot of tax planning boards will go for their recommendations.
Yeah, that, thanks, that, that's, I think that's, general statement is true, but we might have something specific where we say we're gonna involve them.
Probably the least intensive Conservation Commission option has been, was dormant for several years.
Yeah.
Longer than that, I think.
Well, several years. Like a decade.
At least.
Okay, this, this computer's not really cooperating with me, but I do think we owe it to check the section of our regs for conservation subdivisions and confirm we're not missing out on that in our, like, literally in our zoning ordinance. So I'm just gonna try to pull that up. Conservation subdivision. Page three. Applications for conservation subdivision, oh, one issue is, part of this is considering a conventional subdivision as opposed to a conservation subdivision.
Yeah, and that, I mean, there's just one simple sentence that I can read on that, it says, "This ordinance shall apply to all subdivisions in the town of Troy except as provided below. Applicants may use a conventional subdivision design when they can demonstrate to the satisfaction of the board that a conservation design would do no more to further the goals of this ordinance than would a conventional design." But it seems like it's up to the, the board.
Okay. Density determination, dimensional requirements, design standards, administration. Yeah, there's nothing about notifying the Conservation Commission in the zoning ordinance. Okay, so for one, we need to re, we need to reschedule and renotice this. But I think, Jack, what you're saying is, let's try to make the, the best use of this time. And I think what I heard was, learn about the latest, or understand what the latest design looks like, how it changed from the last time.
And, yeah, and also hear from Josh about, about the justification for the reasons for the waiver and, and the, and the public whether conventional or, or conservation.
I think it's, it's reasonable to start that, but I think it will have to probably get rehashed at the public hearing, and that's where we would be voting to accept waiver or not. Does that seem reasonable?
Yes, I agree entirely with that, like, the only reason I'd like to go now is we've already gone through a series of three plans and I'd like to sort of get to the point where we, he.
If he's gotta change it, you gotta let him know.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that's, well, it's agreed, so maybe I'll just turn over the, turn over the floor.
Yeah, I'll just start going through the changes I made. Basically, we were in, I'll just show what we were in. Th- this was the conventional subdivision that we were showing with eight lots, the, the lot is seventeen point six acres, and we have enough frontage and area for a conventionally eight lots. Basically, after the last two preliminary hearings, it was determined that that density is just too high for this land, so we've come up with this new plan, eliminating two of the lots and creating more regularly shaped lots. You can see this proposed lot one is a bit irregular, but it's, it's four point six acres, so there's almost two acres right down just in this triangle piece, and then we're just pairing the backland with that lot and everything else is is fairly regular. And then the other thing we're doing is your ordinances require seventy-five foot well radiuses to be shown completely within the boundaries of the lots. And there was, some stuff was brought up about whether or not these lots would be able to handle like an accessory dwelling units, because those are allowed by right now and everything, so we're showing a hundred foot well radiuses on each of the lots. And that would accommodate up to six bedrooms, and we're also showing each field areas that would accommodate up to six bedrooms for each lot.
Josh, could you go back to, go back from, I assume the blacked out areas are your leach field areas?
No, the blacked out areas are actually the areas of disturbance, so this would be a, a good kind of slide to compare what a conventional subdivision would result in about ninety thousand square feet of area being grubbed and regraded with houses, there's two houses here.
Oh, okay, I was trying to. Yeah, yeah, okay.
So, so there's, the, the one existing dwelling, which we're, we're pairing with four point four acres, so originally we had one house to the left in the field. We've eliminated that one, and then we eliminated one down on the corner here, so now we're getting three houses down on this end of the wetlands that run through the middle, and then two houses just to the right of that house. And up above, what you would see would be the total area of regrading and disturbance that a conservation subdivision would require, which would be about two hundred seventy-seven thousand square feet. And the reason for that is because you'd have to build a road that has two points of egress. You, you don't allow cul-de-sac subdivisions, and all lots have to front on an internal road in a conservation subdivision. And then you'd also trigger alteration in terrain, and you'd have to do stormwater for the entire site.
Henry, can we go ahead, yeah, unlike a conventional hearing, is it okay if we all, with the public?
Yeah, this is, in my opinion, this is not a hearing. We're not, I did not open a hearing.
Right, but even though it's, it's okay, this, we, we, the board asked questions.
Yeah.
Yes.
You're more.
So Josh, you put together one conceptual plan. In our subdivision, our conservation subdivision, we allow for the potential waiver from conservation subdivision requirements. For example, we may be able to waive that internal road. We, it's, it's not necessarily a given that you would have to do that internal road. Have you considered the possibility of waiving some of the conservation subdivision requirements?
Isn't that the whole point of the conservation subdivision, would be to build a road and have?
Well, I mean, if you look at the goals.
Not if it does more damage than a conventional subdivision. I mean, you, you can clearly see from your plans.
It's not even more damage, it's about managing stormwater runoff.
Right.
That entire area is unbelievably wet, like, it's insanely wet. So, man, so, okay, you have to disturb two hundred thousand square feet, there's a reason for that, it's because if you install wells and septics and roofs which are impermeable surfaces, which can dense water into a specific area, which creates more runoff and condensed areas, you're gonna have even more water in certain areas that you're gonna be pushing water a lot more condensed amounts of water off into the woods, and that's why you need stormwater. That's why you need to do, that's, that's, if you're gonna build a house, like, you need to figure out where all the water's gonna go. Just by the septic that's been put in there, has, has already changed the water that's been flowing off the property to everybody else, like, well, at least everybody else that's downhill.
Yeah, can I, on that note, I guess we're in a quasi-public portion of this, so I was asked by a butter. So this is not on my behalf, this is a butter who is uncomfortable attending the meeting. And I, I think you all have a copy of it, but I wanna read it in another way. To the planning board regarding three thirty-two South, there are three culverts which pass under South Street that originate on the green farm at three thirty-two South Street. Are you aware of those, Josh?
Yeah, they're showing.
Go ahead. I just, I was dumping drainage on my property. Did I mention that the three culverts total thirty-six inches in diameter? I have so much water coming from the culverts that over time I have declared three plus acres, one-third of my land as wetlands. About five years ago, a dower owner, former owner.
Uh, could you, could you just point out, do you know where, where around he's talking about?
He's like right across this, no, he's other end, Rich.
Uh, okay, this is.
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah, but that's all draining off the power lines.
Well, he says the culverts come on, he's got all that frontage in front of you, that's my understanding.
All of this?
He's got nine hundred fifty feet, so you can tell. He's got thirteen acres, nine hundred feet, and all three of those culverts that you have on, they all come into his property.
That's incorrect, this one's draining this way.
I wondered about that, but that, I'm just telling you what he said. So where was I?
Five years ago?
Five years ago, a dower, former owner of the green farm, had a logging crew come in and remove a large amount of trees from his property, and now the new owners are doing the same. The increased workflow onto my property is causing even more damage to my land. I now have trees uprooting and falling over due to this saturated soil from the trespass of drainage onto my land. This situation is going to come to a critical moment as this invasion is now approaching upon the upper zone around my septic field. I have, to even consider this new subdivision is permanence. I gave this information to the planning board, I give this information to the planning board, and respectfully request the following steps to be taken. One, all, any further work being done on the proposal, proposed site at three thirty-two South Street. Two, block off the culverts on the green farm side of South Street, keeping the water on the property from which it is originating. Three, that all environmental, that, that an environmental impact study be conducted with boots on the ground in real-time observation, but during and after this year's spring thaw, so that we, the people of Troy can truly observe the effects of the subdivision. And I respectfully submit this to Troy Planning Board, and to the good people of Troy, New Hampshire, thank them for your consideration. And that was from, uh, wrong flamenting. And then, since I've got the floor up on it, I also believe you have received a totally unsolicited email from Mike McClos, Mike McClosky at the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services.
Yeah, I haven't seen that.
Okay, well, this was to me, I'll just read it to you. Hi, Dick, first I wanted to let you know, you should be contacted by our sampling team, hopefully in the next couple of weeks. Set up an appointment for sampling, the great team were well at your property near Meadowwood Site in Fitzwilliam. As I believe you all know, uh, the aquifer in the area is polluted. Related to that, I was talking to another property owner in the neighborhood who will also be sampled, every house down there is sampled on a somewhat regular basis. They don't do anything, but you're dying. I was talking to another property owner in the neighborhood who will also be sampled, and they mentioned a proposed subdivision on South Street in Troy. I went to the Troy Planning Board site looking for additional information, I couldn't find any application documents, but did watch you watch a YouTube video of the February fifth planning board meeting.
Wow.
I, yeah, it's almost like, almost like last news to first.
All three and a half hours.
Yeah.
You'd be surprised, we, people watch them all over the world.
Yeah, I saw them, it's just, they don't have cable, that's what they do. I saw that you were in attendance and provided some comments, including that the aquifer in the area was contaminated. But we currently don't know if the Meadowwood Site would impact drinking water wells for the proposed subdivision, at a minimum, it should be a consideration of the town and developers. Is that within the purview of the planning board, question mark?
Good question.
We want to at least make sure those are, those who are involved in reviewing and approving or not approving the subdivision plans, and the developers are aware of the conditions in this area. Thanks for your help, Mike McClosky. Gives us all this stuff. And just so you know, what my response was, Mike, it would be within the purview of the planning board initially, and then the selectmen in actually issuing the building permits, the select board would be remiss in issuing building permits if we know it's an issue, in my opinion. The planning board would not have it as an application on its site at the moment as it was sent back for failure to notify one of the butters, but it will be back on the agenda once the renotice process is completed, just, that was my understanding of what we're doing. Uh, I've CC'd the town administrator, so he can forward to the planning board as well as selectmen's rep on the planning board, that's Curtis. And the planning board consultants, so they can follow up with you, or you can follow up with them, thanks for the follow-up. Dick Paxton. So there is a, what I certainly believe to be a genuine concern of part, of part of DES. And Carol's comments, if you didn't see it, were, she wasn't sure that the planning board had ever gone that deeply into a proposed subdivision before. She wasn't, she didn't say you couldn't or shouldn't, she didn't say you could or should. This is like, this is sort of a new one. Oh, I'm sure it's happened someplace else in the state.
Well, I think there was a property in town on, was it West Hill? There were like two lots where there was maybe a garage.
Oh, yes, uh, right where Josh Ellis's garage was.
Okay.
But that tested, when they tested it, those wells were clean.
But I think it was, it became integrated with the planning board process because I think it was like a condition of approval that, that testing.
I believe that's right, cause they took it and divided it into either three or four lots. Yeah, and then two of those lots have been recombined. But you're right, that's.
Yeah, Carol's.
Do you know what the contaminations are in the?
Yeah, P-FAS, yeah, have VOCs.
Plus radon, like, but weren't.
Everything.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, Carol's memo on this was just that according to DES, there's no definitive answer to that. Nor do they know whether conditions on Meadowwood Site would affect the location of this subdivision. However, they will soon be sampling residents streaming water on well properties that are within five hundred feet of the Meadowwood Site, some of these properties are located between Meadowwood and the proposed subdivision. DES cautions that while results of sampling could give some indication of issue, groundwater here is in bedrock, which is more complicated to analyze. Since there does not appear to be a definitive answer to the question of contamination at this time, and therefore, non-strong argument for the board requiring the kind of expensive testing would be needed to try and answer that question. The board could include this concern in its notice of decision if approved, and require a note of the subdivision plat that advises future property owners of potential contaminants and recommends sampling new wells for volatile organic compounds and effluents.
So my concern as a selectman, I have concerns for both of these, simply as a selectman, not as the butter. And I don't know what our liability is or isn't in these things, but those of us that are of a certain age will remember Love Canal in Buffalo. And so if we, as a select board or as a town, knowingly issue building permits, and you can take it, let's, let's take it out of the context of this particular subdivision, cause maybe it is, maybe it isn't, and say, well, we're gonna let you build. and say, well, we're gonna let you build a house on uh, uh, Canary Road in Troy, which actually runs down behind the common and it's a brownfield. Uh, cause it's a perfectly flat subdivision and so you can put in a well in septic there or where it's actually could have town water and sewer. I would have concerns about issuing that building permit and what the liability, not to me as a person, is because my liability ends at the door when I walk out of here as a selectman. But my concern would be to the, for the town for having issued permits that don't, that in some way properly addressed this. And I don't know if we have that liability or not, but you know, I don't want little Mikey to move into the house. And and I can tell you, uh, anybody who's involved with anything regarding the housing industry at this point. We have the the, the standards have been consistently chopped, reduced, meaning chopped in half. What is the standard for lead poisoning today is half of what it was two years ago, which is half of what it was five years ago. And that doesn't even get to if you're an old dude like me where you used to, you know, you could eat lead tinsel off your grandmother's Christmas tree cause it tasted good, uh, which may explain a lot for some of us, but.
Come back to it.
Yeah.
I will say, uh, I did find that New Hampshire DES has a a website that shows all of their sampling locations for PFAS. And it it appeared that the last time sampling was done in this area was twenty seventeen.
Sounds great.
Was what I could find.
Mm-hmm.
And before closest wells to us, I didn't have any PFAS, they were, they were green on my map here. Uh, the one well directly at the Meadowwoods was orange, meaning it had some PFAS, but it was, it still met the EPA standards.
I think they just drove, drove this last year, they just drilled like four or five new test wells.
Yeah, they.
They 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 spent a whole lot of time there this summer drilling a bunch of new test wells.
Thanks, I think what you're saying is it's it's public, the testing is.
Yeah, it's public information.
And maybe there's gonna be more testing information.
One on the driveway, didn't they?
Two, and then there's one, so right, right in front of Meadowwood where the rock sticks out of the ground, there's a new gull sleeve right there.
Yeah, if you wanna see worst case scenario, you can look at Westminster, Massachusetts. The struggle, the pity, the problem high upon a hill and it's draining towards everything.
Everything, right, yeah.
So, okay, well, that's that, um, there, there are numerous, this kind of complex issues coming up here. I think what was shared about the drainage is another one, um, that I can't remember having such a specific concern about from a butter and um, would seem to involve like how towns are allowed to construct drainage, you know, that's not, it's not the subject parcel that constructed the drainage. It's the town, you know, that constructed the drainage.
Actually, that might not quite be correct.
Okay, okay.
It may be that the town, so the a butter, these were originally one parcel. And the former owner asked.
Oh, each side of the road.
Each side of the road. And the former owner asked to drain off the, we'll call it the high side, which is an overstatement. But the the subject parcel onto the complaining parcel. And that was infinity years ago. Uh, but that is the understanding of the gentleman who owns it now. So who, how was it done, like so many things in Troy at that time? Uh, it was done as a convenience to a property owner at the public expense.
But it was done by the town.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, but uh, but still, there must be, um, you know, if it was infinity years ago, it's the, there's a presumption that the purchaser.
Knew.
Is aware of.
Well, his issue, and he does know, that's why he knows all this stuff, changing it. Yeah, his issue is, and now you're changing it.
Yeah.
Uh, I guess.
His concern is you're changing it.
The only thing I say that is our entire site slopes towards South Main Street.
Well, I I I have to agree with you, I I don't understand.
And do you mean your whole site, other than where the current building is?
Correct, yeah, so e- everything we're gonna be doing, like i- in this area, let me check, oh, that's not the lack. Th- this is all sloping down to, there's basically a big wetland complex through the middle here.
Right.
Which is actually draining from his property. And then this is roadway drainage that's also coming onto our property from his property. The only culvert that's feeding across the road is this one down here, which is catching drainage from the power lines.
Mm-hmm.
So, and then it it generally slopes down towards.
Yeah, and I would imagine it's that upper one that's the bigger issue, because that's roughly where his house is located and this.
And we're not doing anything over there, no. We've eliminated that lot.
Yeah, he feels, he feels that is, I'm just saying, wait.
Okay, I wanna eventually look at the plan closer to understand that, but I'm hearing.
Is it possible to, if I could get a copy of that letter, just so I can read through it?
Yeah, you can have this one, it's uh, I have in my inbox, so. Uh, yeah, that's helpful to everyone, um. Okay, so, yeah, we talked about, um, talked about drainage, uh, contamination nearby. I think we wanna get back to though the, the like conservation subdivision options. I'm hearing there's some things in there like having a cul-de-sac that would create uh, extra work. But I think what your, your point was, some of those things could be waived and still.
You know, personally, I think the idea of an interior roadway is terrible. I I I think you do more damage that way. I I I would rather, I don't, I wouldn't wanna waive the conservation requirements, and I don't pretend to be an engineer. But I think there's gotta be some situation where you can say, you can address the conservation issues, but not have, do even more damage by putting, attempting to put a road through the swamp, which is literally what that is.
Yeah, right, I think the conservation subdivision regulations say that all the houses have to go on into an interior road, however, I think the planning board has the power, or the authority. To waive that.
I I agree, that's my reason.
So I was just asking Josh to consider, I, just to keep in mind that that the design options are there if you wanna ask for waiver, not sure that we would approve the waiver, but if you wanna ask for the waiver to not do that road, that might be approved.
And then what would the difference be?
Yeah, but but then you'd just be back at a conventional subdivision.
No, no, because you can, you can, the other thing that we have, the planning board can do with conservation subdivision, two things. We we can provide some guidance on what the density would be, and the density is largely driven by what the uh, density is in the district, so it's two acre lots. Um, you've made a proposal for a density of six houses, which may not be reasonable, but you know, that's it's kind of in the ballpark. And uh, it's not a two acre for a lot, you know, you can do a bit of a cluster design where you might have a half acre lot, three quarter acre lot.
Right, yeah.
Um, and maybe rather than have the road, maybe you could have some shared driveways, so that you wouldn't have six driveways, but maybe a couple of driveways. So there's a lot of options there within the conservation subdivision, and then what you also could get is open space. You know, that that in your design, uh, almost every inch of space is allocated to the property owner. With the conservation subdivision, the smaller lots, you could have, and what, one of the reasons for doing it is, is you have a common open space, and you have woodland preserved or wetlands preserved. Um, and you don't have, you don't have people owning the wetlands, for example, that could be part of your, your open space. So I think there's, there's, there's options there that perhaps you haven't considered uh, within a, within the conservation subdivision that, that, um, that we would have to consider in whether to grant the waiver or not.
This, so this is our first conservation subdivision, like eligible property. Have, is the system of points been talked about and the incentive for for new lots? Cause I think part of, part of the purpose of the conservation subdivision was to incentivize.
It's to encourage density, basically.
Yeah, to 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 boost, you know, density a little bit, but there's like many different, um, items that award points. Some of those might not be feasible or not be applicable. Like five of the points are specific to building plans and incorporating more sustainable construction, so. I I I don't know, I I haven't spent as much time with, with everyone on this, but um, I think, I guess I'm advising you to like look at your ability to, um, increase density through those, um, points.
Right.
On on page four, um, cause it, it could yield maybe another lot, I guess, if if some of those could be followed. The 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 maximum is up to twenty-five percent, um.
I think that's, I think. I think one of the concerns of the butters, that I suspect the reason Josh came back with six lots instead of eight, was the density, under any circumstances. And if you're familiar with land.
Okay.
You're getting, that last house on the right is basically somebody else's courtyard.
Yeah, right across the street, there's another home, yeah.
Well, yeah, like, and it's a small street.
Yeah.
Well, it's too rough there.
Okay. Um, so Jack, Jack, you, you kind of had a little bit more of a vision about how the dialogue, what dialogue you wanted to get through today, is there any other?
Exactly, exactly, but they're still doing a conservation subdivision, still meeting the intent and spirit of the conservation subdivision, having open space, having, um, maintaining the rural nature of the, of the land, et cetera, and I'm, you know, I'm not, we haven't had the public hearing, we're not deliberating. But I, I'm thinking that, uh, that the spirit and intent may be better met with a conservation subdivision than a conventional subdivision, but it's preliminary, you know, I haven't heard the.
How would you manage a common areas in a subdivision like that?
Well, they do.
An HOA?
Excuse me.
No, you said for an HOA.
But you, you just have it all on land.
They have.
But like, that might just all matter, which is correct.
And they have, they have, you know, the.
A bunch of.
Guide, you can do it by deed or easement or.
Pollard's Association.
But then you just have, I have that, now that they, didn't you remind me, we have one of Richmond's, we just threw that. Was it half of us little houses or? Three hundred and sixty acres or something like that. And they all had their own two acre parcel and then they had a, like a forest.
Yeah, I'm hearing you're right, that, you know, what it might allow you is that really unconventional lot at the bottom suddenly turns into a somewhat conventional lot with, with the ability to make it slightly smaller. And then that gets preserved as open space.
Right.
We don't have, like, my biggest problem is, is, it's clear with these odd sized lots that we're maximizing, you know, the ability to, to put in homes and sell homes, which is kind of against the spirit of several things that, that we have in our licenses and master plan and that sort of thing. And, and, I mean, if we lose one lot, we're, we're not even having this conversation. I think that was our original preliminary hearing and, and we're, we're getting closer and closer to there. I just wonder, you know, we still have one highly irregular lot.
Yeah, but that, I mean, that lot's more than double the area requirements for the.
I get it, I just, it's everybody.
But if you did a, if you did a co- a conservation subdivision, conceivably, you could just eliminate that big.
All, all I would do is.
Two acre tail.
Draw a line right there.
Right, and just, right, everything, right.
And I think one of the, the, the issues that the neighbors had is they didn't want a lot of driveways coming in through the road too. And you could, maybe with shared driveways, you could, you could eliminate some of that.
We tried to do that by eliminating two lots, but I think you would rather see a conventional subdivision going, it's just easier to deal with, I think.
Why, why is that?
As far as selling houses and having to deal with common driveways and.
Oh, I see.
Driveway agreements and all of that.
From a, from a.
From a legal standpoint, yeah.
From your, from a developer's perspective.
What happens when Mary Sue doesn't pay, but Bob still gets a cloud?
Yeah, especially if you get into having shared septic systems and everything like that too.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't thinking of going in that direction, I was just trying, thinking of, um, trying to minimize the number of, of entryways in the road.
That's what happened, great.
Uh, question, is there, is there any requirement for conservation subdivision to be considered at all?
Yes, a ten acre lot has to be, it's the first.
It's a, a, any subdivision more than five lots.
Correct, that's the very first subdivision.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, I'm sorry, five, five lots, yeah.
Um, where does this, can you tell me where the, where it says that?
Page three, on the conservations of.
Oh, okay, so it applies to all subdivisions except as provided below.
So it sounds like if he just loses the one lot, turns it into five, he doesn't have.
We don't, with this conversation.
It's, he just builds as much as he wants, just like Chad.
We, that's why Chad did five.
Cause Chad came in, so I got five, give it to me, I'm gone, we're out.
Right, and, and as I go further, that, no, I'll, I'll go back to that later.
What is a subdivision that creates a lot for no more than one additional dwell unit?
An ADU.
Right.
Um.
Well, no, a subdivision wouldn't be.
No, I know, I know. A subdivision that creates a lot for no more than one additional dwelling unit, is that?
That would just be a single family house.
Two lot subdivision?
Yeah.
Right, and you do two units by right, so it.
But I mean, the fir- the clause A says anything less than five lots is exempt, so.
Correct, so you just build a bunch of duplexes.
Five or less, right, so you can build a five.
So you got five. I guess if you went with two, right, the second box, you'd be back again.
Uh, no, that's saying it's exempt.
Oh, right.
If it's just creates one additional dwelling, it's exempt, okay. So, um, I'm, I'm a little bit at a disadvantage here, I haven't thoroughly, um, looked at the how this plays out on the property. I kinda defer to the board on what other questions are.
The, the biggest public feedback was, was density and, and it seems like both subdivisions we looked at were the amount of.
So you could do like a row house type thing, where it's like eight units all in one big building with garages below. We have one driveway, one everything, and it's all shared, like, kinda like condos. You could do something, or something like that. Let's just one building.
Is multi-family allowed on?
No.
Okay.
Well, unless.
But you're asking for waivers, why ask for a waiver?
If you went in and did it as a condo.
The biggest thing was density in there, right, and, and, and at eight, it was, and the lots were extremely erratic to, to, I mean, great, you did a great job meeting all the requirements, yeah.
With the, con- they're kinda converging towards the.
Right, the first one actually had a horseshoe that had no continuous frontage and, and that, but, um, and it's, it's gotten progressively better for sure.
Yeah, I think the challenge with the waivers, you know, is you're gonna have to make the decision that the conventional, um, meets the purposes of the conservation, and there's two that are gonna be hard to meet. To preserve areas that have high natural historic and cultural conservation, namely the nat- natural areas. It's harder to make the case that those lots are gonna preserve those natural areas compared to the conservation subdivision. And also to create meticulous connections between open space within a subdivision where possible and open space for trails or ground land. So they're trying to, I, I, I mean, if I read the spirit and intent, it's trying to preserve the natural.
Well, if he did, if he did what he said earlier, you know, Josh, did you see that triangle on the, no, wait, right there.
Okay.
The triangle on the right, is that two acres approximately?
It's like one point seven or something.
Okay, so it just is just, I'm not trying to fix the problem for him, but addressing what you said. If he, if he just drew a line and made that lot the triangle, and then that remainder, that sort of.
Ten foot strip that butts every lot.
That butts every other lot, and it also provides a buffer on South Main Street.
And it gives everybody access to South Main Street and the power lines.
Well, right, which is like technically the major highway.
Right.
So you're saying you're doing a conservation subdivision with the green.
Well, I could by drawing one line here.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, I could by drawing one line here, and then just dedicating this to open space.
Right.
But, yeah, we just have to, there'd be one non-conforming lot we'd have to make.
And that that we would need the, it wouldn't be non-conforming though, there would be a conservation subdivision.
No, because we, we can set, we can set this, yeah, we, we can, the planning board sets, it's not even a waiver, we can set the minimum lots size.
Right.
Or we can set any lot size.
Where does it say we can set the lots?
Yeah, I don't say that's not about each, so the context.
No, in the dimensional, in the dimensional aquarium, the, um, let me see, I'll find it.
It does say that, I I remember reading that.
Uh, minimum lot sizes.
E three, the minimum lot sizes for individual lots or lot areas for dwelling units will be determined by the planning board based on availability and adequacy of sewer.
You showed up, I know.
Yeah, I am.
So in theory, you can make all the lots smaller, and then add more.
Well, you might as well leave them at that size.
Well, well, like, what I'm saying, theoretically, you can make more shared land in the back, smaller lots, and then.
Yeah, but maybe you want to make that wetland, um.
Where you just.
You know, not not part of a lot, just make it part of the open space.
Where, where's the, I'm referring to Jack.
I think the range between the, between the yellow one and the red one.
Yeah, that's the lowest part of the.
Right.
You have to live, the idea of a conservation is to preserve these these.
Yeah, preserving dwellings would be, I mean, a good, good goal.
No, I mean, they're preserved anyways through your ordinance and the twenty-five foot buffer around the whole development. It's not like people are gonna go in there and rip them up anyways.
You'd say that.
But it's a little different.
Yeah, it was less like with that South Main Street, like.
Having a homeowner, think this is my land, can do it for a homeowner.
We don't have any of that in Troy.
No.
But.
Okay, um.
I feel better about this, actually, I think, I think the idea of, well, you do it or not, I think the idea of a conservation subdivision. Solves the problems, I certainly think this is a better proposal than the first one we saw, the first two that we saw. The weirdly done up lot was.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
Josh, my other question is how wide is that strip down South Street?
Two hundred feet, lot three is two eighty-two, lot four is two eighty-two, lot. Five is two hundred point five, and then lot six is five eighty-six.
Yeah, I tried to, I had it, I couldn't do it.
Plus or minus six inches. Yeah.
Put that extra six inches there just in case the pin gets moved.
Yeah, we always, yeah, try to.
I just want to point out that we are going by the ordinances, we are reading them and finding out if he if he meets all the criteria, and we're coming out with different options. So the comments that were made earlier by other people in the audience were incorrect.
What, I was gonna clarify that, what she was referring to was building permanent rentals and not subdivision houses, like her, the section she referred to through the building.
Hey, what, I have another question, just because I don't want anything about it, um, what's the difference between a shared driveway and putting a, like a small road to new, new houses?
A a shared driveway is.
Who's responsible for fixing it?
Oh, yeah.
Repairing it.
Not saying it's a town, but it's an association.
No, no, right, it's it's they're fighting over who's paying for it, is basically what the answer is. And then ultimately, they come to the town five years later and said, we don't get along with each other, we want you to take this over now.
So is that as problematic as having shared driveways?
No, well, it it can be, but a shared driveway, from a construction standpoint, is it's twelve feet wide, you can have. Bends in it that makes sense, whereas if you're doing a road feeding loss, I have to have it at least twenty feet wide. Uh, for two lanes, and I have to meet all the roadway standards as far as grades goes, I can only go six percent maximum, you just have to meet all those standards, so.
I I I think that makes it worse than better.
Yeah.
I mean, you can easily visualize going down South Street and you you've got the green farm stays essentially as is. These, you're gonna pick up five more houses, they're gonna be relatively average houses, if you can work based on the disturbance area he showed. You've got, I think the idea of a conservation subdivision is very attractive.
Well, you can put a house out back on that green lot, which would be great, because you get a nice view.
Back here?
Yeah.
No, it's too steep, yeah.
Oh, that's, yeah, that's too steep too.
But he's got a great view, is what I'm saying, he's got a great view.
Your view lot. You know, if you, I like the idea, now that I remember where I had a conservation subdivision. You know, it's an attractive idea, and it's probably something that we should look more at considering the lay of the land in Troy. Which is woefully lacking in flat, sandy lots.
It's apparently wet in places it shouldn't be.
Yeah, we have plenty of slopy, rocky, wet stuff.
Okay, are we ready to maybe talk next steps for for the next meeting for this, or?
Seems like another public notice and another plan?
Yeah. Yeah, so just a question of um picking a, picking a date, but I'm, I'm scared. Quest, like, are, is our plan to just continue the same dialogue at the public hearing, or is there? What changes we see now that could be worked on?
Josh has done a great job of making changes on this, I don't know anything being requested, but I think this might be an option. What would it be noticed for? Would it be noticed for the six lot or the eight lot? So that would be my question, because like, if we came back today and it was a continuance. But for six, like, what was noticed, so what, well, but so this is my question, is if we do notice this here, what's the number?
Personally, I'd like to see it noticed for a six lot, six lot subdivision, and that could be either a conventional subdivision or a conservation subdivision.
I guess it's up to you.
What's your interest in? Uh, I I would say we would notice it for these plans until I talk to Jamie in here, otherwise, because. Because I got to go ahead on these plans to come present these to the board.
Okay, so it'd be for, for six lots, then, a six lot?
For six lots. Subdivision.
Subdivision, okay.
I think, you know, I think we should consider, um, I think technically we should do a, in order to get, if you're gonna. If you're gonna go that way, you need a waiver, which you've done, and I think the waiver process is conditional, conditional use program, so I think we should do the. If he's going that route, you need to focus on the, on the waiver.
Um, and, sorry, I didn't see that the waivers were baked into the conservation subdivision regs, is it, are they?
Yeah.
Which, which section are the, is the waiver process?
It's that section I read that um except, it's called an exception, that B one, the one that shall apply to all subdivisions of the town, except. If the applicant may use a conventional design, when they can demonstrate to the satisfaction of the board that the convention provision design would go no for, would meet the the goals. So that's, that's an exemption, we're calling it a waiver, but that technically has to go through the condition, and technically it should be a conditional use program.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. Oh, because it's, but it's, it's, I don't think it, it's not, it's not referred to as a condition.
It's not, but we'd have no other way to make a change.
I see. Um.
And this is, this, the rest of it, because you can waive provisions as all the conditional use programs, so, so I, I think it fits, I mean, we checked with Carol, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, I thought it had to specifically require conditional use program if you go through that process.
I'm pretty sure. So I think that's the important thing, when we notice this in Haver hearing, are we going with a regular subdivision plan, which, excuse me, as a conservation subdivision plan, which you don't need the waiver? Or are you going for the waiver and then the plan, and and I think if you're going for the waiver and the plan, then I think we need to really focus the hearing on the waiver. Because that's, that's the decision we have to make, because if we don't approve the waivers, the plan is is muted.
Okay.
My, my suggestion would be if if we all feel comfortable with that lot being very minimally undersized, that maybe it would be easier just to do the conservation, nothing really changes other than this in common land. In the back, and as for use of all those, all, all this property, it, I guess, from a most likely to move forward perspective, my eyes would be that, and then the waiver becomes not needed. But that, that's not, if I'm hearing you right.
Yeah.
Well, we still need a waiver from the internal road requirement.
Yes, you would need a waiver on that.
Right, okay, right.
Yeah, that's a smaller waiver than doing with the entire conservation subdivision, right?
Okay, um, so is our notice going to just. Um, explicitly state that there's being a waiver considered, I don't know if that's necessary, but I could, we could sort that out with Carol and Elizabeth offline.
Right, we would just need, you would need when he submits, you would need to revise his application so he submits a waiver, if he does a conservation subdivision, you have to flip off your waivers. You know, the, you want a waiver you have now and add in the other waiver.
Right.
Josh, the yellow lot, the pink lot, and the blue lot, are they all oversized lots?
Yeah, uh, well, one second, green lot is.
Not the green lot, please.
Well, I'm just, I gotta go in order here, oh, that's lot four.
Yeah.
Lot four is two point two acres.
Okay, and what's the pink one?
The pink one is right around two acres.
What's the blue one?
Right around two acres.
Because what I was thinking is if if you go down the conservation easement, conservation subdivision, rather, road, you could actually just draw a nice straight line. Behind the back of all of them, have a more usable common area in the back.
Right, so it's road to road.
And you can, you're gonna waive some of these anyway, you got enough square footage there, and then it doesn't.
Yeah, they don't, they don't have to be two acres.
Right, right, so just go right. One point nine acre lots, I mean, that seems plenty for what you're doing, plus the other two plus acres, is it two plus acres you wanted up with for the common area? The big triangle on the back.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, so you're gonna have, if you add a little bit more to that, then it doesn't look so weird, which from a perspective of marketing it probably is better.
Have to be in by, have to be in by the Thursday before, so I guess it would have to be in for the, wait.
Because of the six, isn't it?
Yeah, I would like, it would have to be in, um, for the twenty-seventh, for it to meet the.
Having ten days.
The vacation, yeah.
What, what day's town meeting, I just want the twelfth, twelfth, okay.
Okay. It's gonna really throw a wrench into everything, because then you have new people on the board.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was getting at.
So, so there's, there's no way you guys just notice before the next meeting?
If, if maybe I, I wasn't supposed to be here, but I can be.
When's the?
Yes, it's her birthday, right? It is today.
No, it's not today, it's.
Happy birthday.
Sorry, thank you, I was supposed to take a couple of days off, but it's fine, um.
He would have to notice by when, the twenty-seventh?
It would have to go tomorrow to be in the paper for Saturday.
Could we?
For the fifth.
For the fifth.
Should we move our planning board meeting a little bit, just to accommodate?
For, yeah.
Yes.
That'd be easiest, I should do it.
So, and are you suggesting move it, but still keep it before town meeting, is that?
Well, just move it a week or something like that, yeah.
Well, a week, a week is town meeting, the day before selection, we moved our sewer meeting because the twelfth would have been up to the tenth, so.
So that's gonna be tough.
Well, maybe move it to.
To the end of the week, right?
Yeah. Well, the Thursday will be the selectman's meeting, right?
Right.
So, no, because we would have our select meetings being before, that's the, that's the odd week for us.
Do we want to go with the six?
We'll be on.
Saturday morning.
Fall week?
Or not?
We'll be on.
Yeah, I think six doesn't.
I'm sure you're aware of the amount of time.
Six, yeah.
Seven, six, and then they.
The due, the time is due to.
I would be really like waking Friday.
Tomorrow, well, huh.
Okay.
Cool.
Moving it to the seventh doesn't help us, huh? Um. I think, are we talking about the nineteenth then, just, I don't, I don't see a solution here.
But the only thing, I mean, the eleventh, that is election day.
I mean, it'd be good to have continuity with this board.
Right.
So Kai will be able to be here because he's a moderator, uh, I won't be here because I have to.
You could just hold the meeting in the rec, sorry, right in the middle of the.
No, that's, that's gonna be a catastrophe. Just cancel votes, same people.
And I'll be on town on the nineteenth.
For. Oh, yeah, that would be sad, I will, I won't even be here till, I'm on the twenty-seventh, so this.
Guys aren't making it easy for me.
Well, I mean, it sounds like that week is out anyway, but, yeah, I mean, how many? It would, yeah, possibility of what?
Okay, so the nineteen is our conventional date, but we're, there'd be new members involved, not great, um, the week of, which is. The week of town meetings, doesn't seem like there are any days at work.
You can do Monday.
The tenth?
The tenth or the thirteen?
We did a water and sewer meeting that day to get one more in before.
On the tenth?
Yeah. What time's your meetings, are you starting earlier? Six, we start earlier.
Nothing like making this complicated.
Multiple people on multiple boards.
Is there someone else in the town office tomorrow that knows how to do notices, is that better?
I, I.
It's not in my job description.
Well, it's in her job.
It's in hers, but it's not anybody else's.
Oh, okay.
That's true.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because she's a land use clerk.
Okay.
Oh, it's not just that.
Well, but that's, but that's the job description that covers it, I'm sure.
Okay.
The name of the path to the building.
I can assist. Because it covers more.
I get it, it's very tedious to get all those, all the letters.
I know, I apologize, I'm sorry guys.
Sounds like the town is another part-time worker person.
Who will also have a birthday?
Probably the same one.
Statistically, that would be a.
I mean, I can come in, it's not really that big of a deal, it doesn't really matter.
Time to have, time to have, time to have.
It's not.
I hope you feel really guilty.
I hope.
I do.
So what do you need from him to notice this tomorrow?
A birthday present.
Sure didn't hurt.
Um, I just, Carol usually drafts a notice, and as long as it's that plan that's being noticed, uh, and I get a notice, I can send her any mail.
Those are copies of the plan right there.
Okay.
With an updated application.
So that's good, I can, she, I know she has plans that you sent her.
Okay.
And then I can send her that application tonight, and she can draft notices, and I can come in in the morning and send them out.
And leave.
That's the idea.
Nah.
And and can he change the plans between now, you know, if you change?
It'd probably be just notice for a six lot subdivision.
Okay, mm-hmm.
So if if I were to change the plans and then turn it into a conservation subdivision, it would still be a six lot subdivision, right?
Right.
Yeah.
So, so I think we'd be covered, I I think it's better to notice a six lot conventional subdivision, and if we go for conservation subdivision, then we're getting away from the waivers rather than adding waivers.
Right, right, right.
But our our notice isn't gonna even say conventional.
It'll just say six lot subdivision.
Where you're covered, basically.
Right, either way, okay.
You're so good, I mean, you're texting your other, right now saying, guess what, honey?
Maybe.
Yeah.
Um, if if you, if there's anything I can do to help with those Butters.
No, that's okay, thank you, you provided in the Butters list, that's all that I need.
Okay, so we've got a game plan, um, anything else on this? Okay.
Kid's forum.
Uh, what, that's uh, next, next week?
I I don't know, all I know is. I I don't know, all I know is it's coming up, so I think people should know.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, well, yeah, we've got the rest of our agenda here to go through, but that, thank you for taking the time to go through that with us.
Yeah, thank you guys, yeah.
You think of anything, any other questions, send them our way.
I will.
I'll be here for the meeting, just be aware of cases on the form, outside of what I was saying now, but just.
You might can be here on the tenth, okay.
So next meeting is March, uh.
Correct. Okay, we can, um, can move on to our minutes then? There's a motion to adjourn the meeting for one thirty seven hours. Thanks, guys.
One second.
Discussion on the minutes.
I've been on your job.
Yeah, you too. Good luck.
I don't know if this is chronologically correct, on line twelve, where it says the lot line adjustment application was withdrawn. Um, I feel like that is, it's a little confusing to the reader, putting that after the public notice for a different proposal, do you know what I'm saying?
Well, that's part of the public notice though, it's item two.
Um, oh, so the public notice has two proposals in it, I'm sorry, it's three, oh my gosh.
That's right, the second one was withdrawn.
Yep, okay, never mind, I I would draw my.
Seems like we were busy enough.
It was a ten o'clock night.
Gonna be ten o'clock night at this.
Hopefully not.
I think we're close.
You just started. Any, any comments or on that?
No.
Nope.
Okay. Good job. All those in favor of approving it as written, say aye.
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 Any noes or abstentions? Hope stayed. Great, um, can, any other new business to bring to the board tonight?
To be, well, right, right.
For the planning board, all we're here to do is enforce it, or to go over everything.
Yeah, for instance, like this, this this draws lines on a map, we haven't approved any buildings or any construction or anything like that, we basically drew lines and. But to attack individuals over approval on some things really irrelevant.
Which makes everything more difficult.
That's all I got.
Okay, no new business. Um, any correspondence to go over? We went over the, um, email in regards to the South Street drainage, there's a newsletter from Southwest Region Planning Commission with some stuff that happened last month. And then I see a budget in here eventually. I didn't check our inbox on this computer, but so I don't have any emails or anything to bring up right now. Um, under old business, uh, we have twenty twenty five zoning amendments. Is there anything outstanding on on those?
Those are all.
Proposed.
Yeah, I can change it.
Right, so this can be, this could be omitted, um, from next agenda. The twenty twenty five, you know, the, anything to do with zoning amendments can go off.
Yeah, I should have taken off that one, sorry.
Um, appointment of, uh, S U R P C commissioners has been on there for a little while.
I think you should appoint Jack, that's not a joke. You think he's done a lot of research on this, he gets it.
Yeah.
And I think he'd be a great combination with Steve.
But can he be on the planning board or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
It'd be helpful too, because then you can just provide everybody with the.
Yeah.
Trip information.
Sure.
He said, sure, you guys should have a motion that's sent in directly to the select board, so we can vote on it the next meeting.
Which is tomorrow.
So I, I think that's, that's definitely worth, um, discussing. Was there, was there, um, any follow up, uh, with Lisa?
We did recently, yeah, ask her if she was still interested, and she did say yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um. Okay, well, I mean, um.
Yeah, have her come in.
Yeah, I mean, well, we have two selectmen in the room right now. I know when we, we previously recommended Lisa, it wasn't, it was not approved, you know, for different reasons.
But I think those reasons still stand, right?
Mm-hmm.
You got a guy here who is, Lisa's never been on the planning board, with the Z B A.
Yeah.
And.
No, she's got a pretty good laundry list of qualifications that would lead her to be good in commitment sometime, you can be qualified and do a poor job at some time.
That's true.
Definitely would not, yeah, but.
Yeah.
Well, but, you know.
Uh, well, I mean, something.
Just playing those out, yeah.
Well.
Yeah, you can, look, a- a- any port in the storm, I get it, but I think, uh.
Not like she comes with zero experience on being having.
She comes with zero experience with regards to real estate or planning. The fact that her mother's a real estate, her stepmother's a real estate agent in Florida does not constitute a background in real estate. And I like Lisa, and she's done a great job on the school board, so please don't take it the wrong way, but that's my personal opinion.
Yeah, I'm not arguing with with Jack would be amazing.
Um, so, and there's, so there is a provision for alternates for the commissioner role, which is just something we should keep in mind, but I mean, I, I would totally support Jack, uh, being recommended as commissioner, so.
The real key is just getting people to show up to a meeting.
Yeah.
Like, it would be a vast improvement.
The meeting commitment isn't, you know, it's really just three or four meetings a year, it's, but it's more about what that person is, you know, they're, they're paying attention between those quarterly meetings and.
Right.
Um, taking advantage of different opportunities. Um.
Well, we wait till it's warmer, we may have three different people on the board.
Yeah, I do actually, that's why I don't think going on.
I just wanna make sure that that's out there.
Yeah.
Sure, could I, could I hear a motion from the floor, I mean?
I'll make a motion to recommend Jack. If you want it.
Yeah, sure.
You're gonna ball, you can't choose.
You're involved.
I'll say with that motion.
Okay, any more discussion?
Well, you can do a great job.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Any abstentions?
Yeah.
Um, I should have voted on this. I need to vote in favor. Um.
So I don't need to be at your meeting, I don't have it.
No, I won't bring it up.
So, yeah, the, the, right, the process is we, we nominate and the select board approves or confirms, so. Okay, cool, so we have two, after that left, two, both of our, um, commissioner seats filled. I think the board can and maybe should still consider, um, following up with Lisa about participating either as an alternate or simply as just a member of the, of public, because they're.
Right.
They're all public, um, public meetings. Um, cool, any, any questions before we leave that, or any other old business? And twenty four work program, we can, can wrap that up off our agenda. Um, I think really the next thing, well, I guess it'll be a couple of meetings, would be, uh, the twenty twenty five work program. Um, I think for our next meeting, maybe we should list twenty twenty five work program on there, so the board can.
Plan ahead.
Yeah, so the board can select some, uh, at least, you know, shortlist of things.
Well, once again, we may have all the.
May have only board, yeah.
So, uh.
Yeah, it would be, it would be us for us to.
Get a guideline.
Direct that for, to start.
This is where we are, this is where we plan on going.
Yeah.
Is there more, um, complete street grants coming up?
There will be, yeah.
I'd like to see one of the flashing lights down by the library up here.
Yeah, the church.
Uh, we have one of the wa- crosswalks up here, uh.
The church, right.
There's a lot of foot traffic in this from the common to the mini market.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
The whole plaza, actually.
Yeah, well, and and between the school, like, every day.
Yeah.
Like, there's bus stops on the common, like, it's, there's two bus stops.
I think if we maybe used the old one, um, kind of just changed the location and everything, and even one for, you know, coming up Mill Street, I don't think, I mean, it is a state road, but.
Well, the sidewalk ends at eighteen. I mean, it just goes to nothing.
Right, they don't go down, but they come up, and then they, but a lot of the kids are crossing. I want to cross to get on that side, go around the library.
Yes. Go get on that side of the library, yeah.
So I, I mean, I, it, it's working, the light over by the, the church and everything, and it's great. And I think the speed sign too, some people are saying they don't like it because it flashes and everything, well, it means you're speeding, just wanna point that out. It's flashing, you're speeding, slow down.
Well, yeah, and the flashing lights at the sidewalks, really, I mean, there's enough things going on in your car and on the side of the road in front of you that it's, it's just good to know someone's attempting to cross the street, right? We all try and be attentive, but.
Or you have on the common, I wouldn't see them on the common either, because I, I live right on the common and I see people trying to cross this every morning and every afternoon, and cars do not stop, they don't see the crosswalk and they just sit there and they have to wait until somebody says, oh, that's a crosswalk there.
Yeah.
Well, I'd have trouble crossing. How to escape drivers who are baffled by their common, oh, yeah.
Conceditionals and.
Yeah, going the wrong way, no, at least once a day, there's somebody goes the wrong way on the common, it's like, what?
But to answer your question, yes, like, the, the program that sponsored the, the one by libraries is bad in annual opportunity, wasn't assumed to be, but there's, there will be another round that opens in April, May timeframe, you know, with the deadline of September, October, so.
That's what we gotta look at, I mean, the, I think the lights are working, it's one of the big things we did, um, unfortunately, we can't do the sidewalks, fixing the sidewalks, um, I know a lot of them are having issues, especially the ones on School Street.
Yeah.
Yes, excuse me, current, current administration, um, but, um, it's, there could be a new, new version of that. Um, uh, the other approach would be, um, a ten year plan project. Every two years, the town can nominate any sort of projects. And that'll be, so, yeah, so we, we'll put that on our list for like the twenty twenty five work plan, you know? These are, these are our ideas about what, um, should be worked on.
Can I make a suggestion? I know we, I'm not quite sure what the status of the new ma- new master plan is, uh, but there are fifty bills in the legislature, all dealing with planning and zoning. And so about half of them are carbon copies between the two houses, where they're within striking distance of each other, so there is a big political incentive on both sides of the aisle to quote, do something. And the, the, it's everything from multifamilies to lot size.
Parking.
Parking, that went away yesterday.
Oh, okay.
Reducing the.
Requirements for parking on residential.
Also the, the, the frontage on roads.
That's another thing, I mean, I don't wanna, you don't wanna go through the whole list, but there's all kinds of stuff.
But so that'd be another twenty twenty five work plan, it's like, you need to follow the bills through the session.
Well, and and most of the bills, you know, I pointed this out in the hearings, you can, you, because a lot of these came through and said, well, it's gonna become effective sixty days after signing. Well, the only problem with that is that if you're in a town meeting schedule, you can't get there from here, you have to have time to notice it and have your town meeting. And so most of them are being put out at one year from signing or two years from signing.
Oh, interesting.
So it gives you enough time to have your, go through the regular hearing process, because the towns do have to vote on it, the question came up in the hearings yesterday, what happens if a town doesn't adopt it? Well, then you're in violation of the law and somebody can sue you. Which goes to Mike's point from earlier, which is, and Curtis's as well, it, these are the rules, you can't get mad at somebody for following them. And you're gonna, it, it's literally Calvin ball over there right now with these things, so.
What's Calvin ball?
Oh, Calvin ball is, uh, it's, you have a set of rules, but if you throw the ball up in the air and you get a rule change, then it's a.
Their, their rules are off?
Rules begin to call new rules, it's a bit comics for Calvin and Hobbes.
Oh, yeah, geez. God, must have all of those, I don't know how I missed that.
You're not old enough.
I mean. Um, okay, so another item for the list, though, safety or road safety master plan, uh, bill tracking. So I guess Elizabeth, if you could remember to add the twenty twenty five work program brainstorm to the list, that'd be great. Um, I s- I realized we did have copies of our budget here, did I miss an action, or is this just FYI, this is what's in the town?
No, that's just for you guys is, yep, one is the end year for twenty four and one is what was budgeted for twenty five.
This one, so, here's one, I think the number's so low, oh, this is just, uh, huh. Why is this one only two hundred and sixty one dollars?
That one might be the twenty twenty one one.
Okay, thanks.
Of course.
Um, cool, um, selectmen's updates, um, Curtis and Nick, anything that we're meeting tomorrow?
Okay, yeah, um, the app, uh, for the rec, the applications for summer camp staff are, are, they're taking applications now. Must be sixteen years old, um. Other than that, row skating on the first Friday of March, uh, for the school, at the school. So, yeah.
Okay. Cool, I think, uh, we don't, we have no need for non-public tonight, it's my knowledge, um, and, yeah. Did you have something?
Candidates for him.
Oh, yeah, next week.
Bring a friend.
Twenty six.
Bring a friend's friend.
That's it.
I have no idea, it's a direct center. Call W M U R, come, call N H, or any, V P R. Call V P R, or whatever, yeah, bring a, bring a friend.
Okay.
We're on public radio, if you wanna listen to it on your radio. I listen to V P R, I can't stand N H. Better program.
Cool, uh, great, well, our next, our next meeting will be on the fifth, we'll have a public hearing, some other stuff. And, sorry, anything else? All right, we are adjourned at nine oh three, thanks, everybody.